The December sixteenth, are you ready to go? Alright, thank you. And we'll come back to order for our public session. Uh, the December sixteenth, twenty twenty four, Franklin School Board Meeting at six oh one. And we'll begin with our salute to the flag. Thank you. Colleen, we have our meeting postings as required, thank you much. And agenda item number four, public participation, do we have any members of the public here this evening that would like to speak? Seeing none. Agenda item number five, our students, our schools, and we have the Franklin Middle School Hour Code.
Oh, we apologize, there's no cute kids with us tonight. We tried, we tried, it didn't work, too close to the holiday.
So, the Hour Code, we're gonna watch this, uh, but the Hour Code is a worldwide event. Over a hundred million students worldwide have coded, learned about coding, what that is. Um, it's all about exposure and just kinda celebration and getting kids excited. Uh, last year, we did this Paul Smith, had huge success. We used the promo video from that to show to all of the middle school students because they're related to some of them and they know a lot of those kids. And that enthusiasm kinda took over the middle school and we had a very successful Hour of Code on Tuesday of last week. So, we'll play this, we'll answer a few questions at the end, um, it's pretty straightforward and, and fun, enjoy.
I like coding because it's fun, new, and learnable.
They got the, it's a mindset, mindful mindset, and you said, oh, when I get stuck, I don't get frustrated, I don't get mad. I get determined, I try something different, I ask other people, I try a different way, I just do better.
What do you like about coding?
Well, I like coding, and at the end, you get to do whatever you want, like I would also want, so. I can do like this, and it will make it faster or slower. And, and then you can pick what you can make, so maybe you can practice your way. And how I do it because I think anything, because when you learn about it, it's actually like, it's accurate, where I thought it, you can make whatever you want. It also wasn't other things, but I thought they were really kind of nice things.
I like how you can do, I mean, more like making little horses, like I'm my mom, I'm making a giant horse that is not going to die.
I'd like to make it, it's, it's not anyone's horse.
And what are you gonna do because it's not working well, are you gonna give up? What do you like about coding?
It shows me how much more intelligent my students are than I am.
What do you like about coding?
It's fun and like, I'm just gonna try to tell you.
What do you like about coding?
I love how they're excited to do it, super fun.
What do you guys think?
Yeah, it's very fun.
Yeah, what do you think?
I love coding.
Alright, what do you guys think about coding?
This is so sweet. Whoa.
What do you think, Daddy?
Slice, it's fast.
Play, what do you think, Mom?
I think it's fun, I have first and then nobody needs to do it.
Yeah? What do you think about that part? Okay. Any, any information, uh, share with Mr. Hartman?
This is.
It's worth watching, let me see if I can get this to catch up here. That's unfortunate. There we go.
Out of this world.
Literally.
Hey guys, what do you think about coding?
Uh, I like it.
What do you like about it the most?
Um, you can do a lot of stuff.
Yeah, and it can, I think, it's very important.
I mean, it's kind of hard, but it's easy. And I'm not supposed to say that, but it's, it's. Um, the Minecraft one is a little bit hard, but a little bit easy.
Yeah, and what do you do when you get to the tough part?
Um, I just.
Okay, tough some deal.
Yeah.
Go.
So, I tried, but it opened up, and I know, I know it's getting up. If you give up, you and I will learn after like fun.
What did you think of the Hour of Code this year?
The Hour of Code was a lot of fun, um, it was great to see the engagement with the students, um. And pretty much every single one of them was, was totally into it and, you know, sharing their progress with other people and whatnot, it was, it was good.
Great, um, what did you think personally about trying to do coding, one of the coding activities?
Well, uh, it gave me a little bit more insight why so many of our students oftentimes feel frustrated and they want to give up. Um, when I was doing it, uh, it's, it's rather picky and, you know, if you miss one little step, you gotta go back and fix it. So, it was, it was good for me to demonstrate perseverance and sticking with it, so, yeah, I think it was just good all around.
What would happen if you missed a step or didn't read all the directions fully?
Uh, you would just have to go back, uh, review, what, identify your mistake, basically. Um, through reading the instructions again, just slowing down, go back, double check, and it's, it's really not that difficult to find the mistakes. But oftentimes, you overlook certain things in the process.
So, you had to empathize with your students a little bit about how they.
Yeah, absolutely.
Learn everything, yes.
Um, I really enjoyed it, I found that, um, there were some new additions, cause I had done Hour Code previously. Uh, students here seemed so engaged in it, uh, they were having fun. Um, but there were a couple of new, uh, coding activities that I hadn't done myself, so I was doing them in class with the kids. And realized that some of the things that they do on their own every day, I also fumbled with, um, in class. So, it was a learning experience for both myself and the students. Um, they also were noticing, so some of the, um, programs are that they are using math and logic, um, and sequencing. That actually ties into some of the things that we've been talking about, um, in class. So, it was really fun to watch their excitement and sometimes they would get stuck and they would, um, have to keep going back through and redoing it. And we related that to some things that we've been doing actually in class. So, um, it was really fun and engaging and I really liked that in class.
What did you think about the Hour of Code at Franklin Middle School?
Oh, it was awesome, it was really awesome, my summer was my time for fourth grade, and, um, those kids were so ancient and hard to teach them how to code. And it was so funny, they, they really realized, you know, nothing about to, like, they were patient. And I got to see little fish swim around, I got to see planets, um, certainly what I assumed was the sun, but I didn't ask water questions because I was already looking pretty bad.
What was the challenging thing for coding for you?
Um, just trying to understand the process, I, uh, uh, it's not a skill set and I was having fourth graders teach me. So, while I did understand that there were blocks that were moving from one point to the other, I really didn't understand where the blocks originated. So, there was a little bit of a learning.
So, you're modeling being learnful?
I was being very learnful, whether or not I was successful, like, the learning part is still needs to be determined.
Thank you.
Do you want me to just go ahead?
Uh, so, they'll, yeah, please, go for it.
So, learnful is when you try new things and you try to figure them out and you have students help you and you don't give up.
That's true.
Yeah.
So, we had a first grader last year, Paul Smith, Kara interviewed her, she was, that, that little first clip in the beginning of the video. And she said, coding is fun, new, and learnful. Like, wow, never heard that word. And so, this year, and, and we've been kinda laughing about it, using that word to be, kinda have an open mind, like, having a growth mindset is the way I take it, the way, uh, we take it. So, we asked all the students, the middle school and here at the high school, we watched this video from last year and you saw just a teeny bit of that one. It's a few minutes, a little promo video with that little girl from Paul Smith who says, be learnful, like, keep an open mind, try, be, you know, persevere. Try something new, stretch yourself a little bit. So, Mr. Gooden had never coded before, so I'd asked him, I asked his many teachers or staff members who would try it, um, including our Robin Keane here, oops. To try a, a coding activity, um, so our students at the middle school demonstrated being learnful.
They did.
As did Jenny, and, uh, it was very successful, so, something to build on. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright. Thank you, alright.
Thank you, Jenna.
I think next year we'll do our, if we do it next year, I think we should invite school workers to come in and, you guys can, um, s- they want to talk.
Thank you all. On to agenda item number six, recognitions. Turn it over to Dan.
Yes, so we have a couple of very special recognitions tonight.
Well, our part is, oh, your part, I think it's, we just did the Hour of Code presentation.
So, we're gonna do Deb Brown first. Deb has been serving on the board since two thousand and sixteen, eight years. She's given eight years to the Franklin School Board, served as treasurer, served as the negotiations chair, um, so, Deb, for all your service.
Thank you so much.
And this is from your S-S-A-U peaks for all those early mornings, they wanted to give you flowers as well, which I thought was wonderful, so, thanks for everything.
It was great to be able to serve our community in this way, it's just one small piece, um, that I'll always cherish, thanks.
And this is starting to become a habit, he saying goodbye to our chairs. But Delaney, for you, for your six great years of leadership dedication to the staff and the students, and we're gonna miss you too, Dan, so, and I'm gonna give you a hug.
Thank you all. Thanks, sir.
Great work, man.
Thank you very much, Dan.
And you two, if you stay on the board that long, will get a wonderful send-off at some point, you just gotta stick around for a while.
Plenty of room for everybody. Do we have any other recognitions this evening?
No, I think those are our two special recognitions for tonight.
Thank you very much. And we have a student representative this evening. No Zoe this evening, okay. Let's see here, next one. Agenda item number eight, approval of prior board minutes, we need a motion to approve October twenty first, uh, public and non-public minutes. We had a, a motion with, uh, approval of, with edits from non-public, please. Jane, we need, we need the motion to include our, our edits from the, from the non-public. Thank you, you want a second, Leanne?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions?
I'm suing.
Deb abstains. And. Minutes are approved. Thank you, uh, agenda item number nine, financial report with Jefferson. Alright, so, I had uploaded the information from the financials into the board folder, hopefully you had an opportunity to review that. So, I uploaded new reports this morning as I was looking through it too, so, um, if you had looked at it prior to this morning, then the information had changed a bit. Cause things improved a little bit, um, but at this point, we are currently considered, and I say considered because we've only really spent up through, you know, five months worth, really. So, we've got seven months to go, or six and a half months to go of, of the fiscal year. Um, but based on what we've expensed and what we've obligated, we are considered over budget by three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, fifty, excuse me, three hundred and thirty-two thousand fifty-seven dollars. This is an increase of a hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars from the previous month. Reports that I replaced were actually worse than that, but I was able to find a few things to clean up and certain things that have changed since that point. Of that hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars, a hundred and thirty-three thousand eighty-three dollars of it is related to additional special education obligations. That's the, uh, issue we're having with this year is special education. Those things that caused it to increase in that month of time is we did hire a new, uh, special education para educator. We also had an increase in special education contracted services, um, and also additional unanticipated out-of-district tuition costs, which were added in. Which also, with that brings along, um, special education transportation costs. So, that is what has driven the increase in our budget from last month to this month, all of this obviously unanticipated. Um, I think the, uh, para educator was a replacement of somebody that left. Right now, our special education budget is seven hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars more than what we had budgeted. The balance of the fourteen thousand four hundred and eighty dollars of the total overage is spread out among the other functions throughout the general budget. So, Dan and I continue to reflect on the budget regularly and discuss options, some and ideas include not filling a position if it becomes vacant, depending on the necessity of the position. So, we're definitely, um, keeping things, um, in perspective as we continue through the year. On the other side of the equation, with our revenue though, we are receiving more than anticipated or budgeted revenues, so that will help, uh, as we get down the road here. One such, uh, revenue source is what's the EFA phase-out grant, um, and EFA, I think we all heard about these, all these education funding accounts. What the state does is when a child leaves a district and takes advantage of the EFAs, um, they provide funds to the school for the loss of, but it's considered adequacy aid for that. First year loss is fifty percent of the base adequacy aid, the second year is twenty-five percent, and the third year goes away completely. Uh, we had a budgeted amount of thirteen thousand three hundred dollars for this year, it's over twenty-three thousand dollars that we're actually going to receive, which is good in the fact that we're getting about ninety-seven hundred dollars more from that. But, long-term, it's not good because that means more students have left the district and our future adequacy aid numbers will decline based on the formula because of that, so, um. It's not a great trend for us to have students leaving and taking advantage of the EFAs and taking, going to homeschooling or private schooling or other, um, educational opportunities. And using the EFA funds for those purposes. Other areas of extra revenue continue to be indirect cost for the grants administration, um, I was conservative in my budget estimates, so what we've, um, are continuing to, um, recognize. The indirect cost that we are allowed to receive for our grants administration, and then, of course, interest from the funds in our bank account, so. Another source of revenue that we're receiving that we hadn't anticipated, um, but it's nice to find out, is we are going to be receiving, and we actually have received some at this point, rebates from Liberty Utilities. Because we had those HVAC projects at Paul Smith Middle School and High School where we replaced the boiler, all the air handlers at Paul Smith School and the middle school. Liberty Utilities, um, provides you with, uh, rebates, uh, reflecting the, uh, um, anticipated energy efficiencies, the gains that we had by, uh, adding those pieces of equipment to our schools. So, some of these revenue, um, numbers have not yet been reflected in the report that's in the, uh, folder for tonight, but it will be probably there next month, depending on when we receive those, um, funding sources. Um, and that's really all the excitement I have for the funding and financing for the district, does anybody have any questions regarding any of that?
We get reports monthly from the principals regarding the number of students that we have in the building, each of their buildings. Is there a way to add, um, a report for homeschoolers as well, maybe what was reported in October to the DOE up by grade level? We don't need names or anything like that.
To be honest with you, I don't, I don't get information from that, but, um, in the report they sent, the EFA doesn't show number of the kids.
Yeah. But that would be something that, um.
We'd have to see.
Whoever does the report for the district should be able to provide that to, um, Dan to put into his report. Cause that would kinda tell us too, how many students may possibly, if things change, you know, as far as academics and things here, that might come back to the school. So, if we've got a really large portion of, um, homeschool students that maybe somehow we can find out if we can target them to get them back into the school.
I can start having monthly updates.
Yeah.
And give you that information.
I think it's important just to know, um, where we stand in that respect.
We'll start it in January.
Any other questions for Jefferson? Alright, thank you, Jefferson. You're welcome. And we'll move on to committee reports. What do we have with, uh, committee reports tonight, Deb, you wanna start?
Um, sure, uh, we met on December third, uh, Jefferson has gone over most of the things that we have, uh, we spoke about, he updated the finance committee about. Um, the additional things that we discussed were the, uh, twenty, FY twenty-six preparation, uh, for the budget and where the process was. Um, we also talked about co-curricular stipends, um, and, um, we also talked about out-of-district placements and our revenues as well. So, it was a very quick meeting, um, and I appreciate Dan and, um, Jefferson for their time that they put into our committee and getting all these reports for us, um, on a monthly basis. Cause without them, a lot of us wouldn't understand what they mean. Thank you.
Any questions for Deb? Alright, uh, you got one, Liz?
The policy committee met on December tenth and we finally, finally finished the fall legislative update. We had a couple, um, queries out to finance committee, to legal, and to the office of school wellness, and so all of those came back, so we were able to look over those. And decide on what actions to take, um, so you, so some will be in summer end first read this month and some will be, um, in, in January. We also were able to dedicate some time, uh, related to a policy to the volunteer recognition event that we are planning for next year. So, we'll hear more about that a little later on in the school board goals update, um, and we are having one more meeting because we aren't losing anybody on the current committee. So, before we reconvene, we're having one more quick meeting on January seventh at four thirty.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports? Alright, I have a innovation improvement committee report, we met on December eleventh. Uh, we had an excellent report from Tim, actually, on, uh, school attendance liaison showing some great improvements in our daily attendance due to his efforts. Um, we had a good discussion on special education budget, uh, with Rebecca in attendance. Um, and this will be a, an long, ongoing process to work on addressing our, uh, dramatic increases in special education costs. Um, Rebecca was, uh, really engaged and is looking forward to continuing in this, um, uh, and this is also part of Dan's, uh, superintendent goals for this year. So, a lot of work to look forward on that. We had a strategic, strategic plan update and everything is looking to be pretty good, on track there, and some things are, are pretty good and ahead of schedule. Um, we are due for a strategic plan, um, update process, annual update process. So, the board should be, uh, organizing, uh, a meeting to review the plan and discuss any, uh, necessary updates for the upcoming year. We had a school board subcommittee update, which, uh, we'll have again here later on this evening, and a portrait of a graduate update. And the innovation and improvement committee will be reorganizing after the school board meeting in January. Onto agenda item number eleven, new business with Superintendent Legallo.
Okay, so, first item of business is I would need the board to accept and congratulate Judy Doherty on her retirement. Judy's a middle school math teacher, uh, who has decided to retire and we wish her well. She had eighteen, at least eighteen years in the district, so, I need the board to, uh, motion on that, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the retirement of Judy Doherty with, um, well wishes for a great retirement.
Thank you, Deb, you have a second?
Second.
Second by Leanne, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions, resignation is accepted.
Okay, thank you. I have a request tonight, uh, from the high school, so we've done this in the past and we're gonna ask the board again for permission to do this again, uh, in the upcoming, uh, winter and spring. The high school has had, at times, had professional development time where they run a couple of half-days where we send the kids home at the high school only, um, like a, a early release type schedule. So that the high school staff can have some professional development time together. Um, Dave has asked me to ask you about having a half-day on February thirteenth, March twentieth, and April seventeenth, so three half-day sessions at the high school. So, he can do the work that he needs to do with them in regards to the POG work that we're doing and, and, and all this. Going back in time, we used to have half-days for the whole district, um, but it was very difficult for our elementary and middle school parents to deal with those half-days and, and daycare and whatnot. But at the high school level, we don't run into those issues because the kids are old enough, uh, to, to go home and. Um, but at the high school level, we don't run into those issues, cause the kids are old enough, uh, to, to go home and, and be on their own. We also used to have mid-terms and finals, we would run those midterm and final weeks of, of exams, and those were always all early release days. So it used to be that we had eight or nine early release days in the high school for exams and whatnot. So, uh, I think that they're asking for three days of a half-day PD and half-day early release for high school is a very reasonable request, and I know that the time would be well-used. Uh, but to make a calendar adjustment like that, uh, I need the board's approval. And like I said, when we did it in the past, we still did run the bus, we did run the buses for the high school kids. Um, we only needed to use one bus to do that, cause not a lot of high school kids ride the buses anyways, so. There's no transportation issue that we run into either, so. Looking for the board to, to, uh, hopefully support that.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, three early release days on February thirteenth, March twentieth, and April seventeenth at the high school, so that, um, teachers can engage in their professional learning communities.
Thank you, Liz, you have a second?
Second.
Second by Marie. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Deb?
Um, how is that, how will that relate to the teacher's CBA? Is there any conflict of that?
There's, there's been no, no conflict in the past when we've done it. So they, we can have up to ten days, and this is a half-day, so it doesn't even impact. So there's no CBA impact, as we've done it in the past as well, with no, with no, uh, issues being raised, yeah. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll email out notification and make sure that all the high school families are aware, um, that this is gonna happen well in advance, so that'll go out right after the holidays. Dave will, he already has the letter written, uh, to, to go out, um, to families and, and make sure they're well-aware of what's happening, so.
Anyone else? Alright, see no more discussion. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And abstentions? Alright, the three early release days are approved.
Thank you. And then, I also wanted to inform the board that, uh, we have received three four thousand dollar grants here at the high school, uh, to support special education students' inclusion in some of our extracurricular programming. Um, Roblox specifically, culture and climate crew, and our make-a-space slash sewing program, so that's something that had come in in the last couple of weeks. So I wanted to make you aware of that. Um, you can accept that, uh, if you'd like to, it doesn't meet the threshold, but combined it does, cause it's twelve thousand dollars total, so I think to be safe, we should just accept the twelve thousand dollars worth of grants, cause it all came from the same funder, which was, I believe, the Department of Education, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the special education inclusion, inclusion grant, uh, from the Department of Ed for a total of twelve thousand dollars.
Thank you, Deb, you have a second?
Second.
Second by Jane. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Grants are accepted.
Alright. And then the only other, uh, announcement is we are all scheduled for January sixteenth for our forum with our community and parents on the work we're doing with James McKim and the, um, humanity, focus on humanity portrait of a graduate work, uh, that we're doing in the district. Uh, so that will be in the middle school cafeteria at six o'clock on the sixteenth. And we'll have, we, we sent out a save the date to parents, but we'll be sending, and I'll be talking to the city council and the mayor about this, uh, when we come back from vacation, but we'll be sending out another mass announcement with some specifics about what the night's gonna look like as well. So obviously, school board members, if you could be there, it's, you know, part of the event is sponsored by the school board. So if we can make, uh, make, put that on our calendars and, and, and show, show, that would be wonderful, so. And that's all I had for the night.
Alright, thank you, Dan. On to agenda item number twelve, school board goals update. With Liz, you, you bringing that, or?
Uh, I can start the volunteer breakfasts first. Um, so our policy, at the policy committee, um, so this, the idea of a volunteer recognition came about when we did the volunteer policy, cause the policy itself is like one sentence, and it just says that we will regularly acknowledge our volunteers. And so we actually wanted to take action on that, um, and so, uh, my lovely policy committee members and myself, we actually have a save the date already, um, Thursday, April twenty-fourth. Um, we are gonna plan to do a volunteer breakfast at nine AM here. Um, and there are a lot of different things that we're thinking of doing, um, that we are still working out the details of, but essentially, we're gonna have, um, the decorations, we'll have, are we gonna have, uh, students that help set up, um, and we're talking gifts, um, possibly donated prizes, just pleased to acknowledge our volunteers. There was going to be, um, a general invite, um, so that we can make sure we get to everybody. Um, so we'll just have people RSVP, and, um, we'll continue working on the details and how we can get kids and the admin team and our other fellow board members involved. And so part of that actually, between policy, that might also, um, shift to another committee come in the year, so we'll, we'll figure something out. But yeah.
Thank you. Laurie, do you have? Do you wanna do the focus walk?
Sure, so in the, um, board folder, there is the focus walk schedule, uh, for twenty twenty-five. Um, has the dates listed. I think we talked about doing a shared signup, um, so people can start, uh, setting up, signing up for times to do, um, the walks. This was one of the, uh, board goals, was to go into the schools and, and see things ourselves. Um, so that will be part of the, uh, subcommittee. Is it, is it gonna be a committee, Liz?
Uh, it's-
The goals committee?
Yes.
Is gonna-
Yeah, school board goals, it's gonna be a new committee.
So that'll be a new committee, and that'll fall under that group, um, but this is work that we, we collectively did together to come up with the, the goals.
So that's, that signup schedule will come out from the SAU.
Okay.
It'll probably come out tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest.
Okay.
And it'll probably be coming from Jewel, she just doesn't know that. We have it all put together, ready to go.
Okay.
Alright, thank you very much. Any other school board goal updates?
Um, except the committee meeting, uh, after the switch in January for committee assignments. Um, and there will be some, uh, I did get the okay from Dan to reach out to Dave Cole, um, cause we did have a meeting with, uh, after the I two committee, um, to talk about some items. Um, and one of the questions is whether or not we can have a specific page for the school board that's only accessible to the school board for resources to share. So we're getting more information from Dave Cole on that.
Thanks.
Alright, we're gonna have our incoming board members on the communication list for, for this.
Soon as we get them up and running.
Must be right after the holidays.
I actually, I think I've already left that done. I gotta drop that out. I think I just gave some information to something over. I don't think I have her number.
You have her number, don't you?
I do have.
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
First, first day back, we will flip that switch.
Alrighty. Agenda item thirteen, policy. We have second reads of BBF, EBCA, EVCH, EH, EHR, GB, GBA, JLC, AKFD, IC, IG, IHAM, IKF, JJIB, JLCJA, JLF, and IHDBA.
I make a motion to approve the second reads as presented.
Thank you, Deb. Have a second?
Well, second.
Second by Leanne. Do you have any discussion on these? See none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And abstentions? Alright, second reads are approved.
I just noticed JLCJA is on the first read too, I don't have it on.
No, cause we're confirming JLCJ, and then-
Yeah, JLCJ is there.
It is there?
It just wasn't on the left side.
Okay.
It's there now, I put it on there today.
Perfect, okay, yeah, so we can, we can remove, we can remove it from the first reads.
Alright. Alright, for first reads, we have DGDDAF, JLP, and GBCD dash RG. Motion to accept first reads. Move by Jane, and a second?
Second.
Second by Leanne. Any discussion?
I have a, a question for policy DGDD, um, credit card, you can, the, uh, credit and procurement cards. Does, do you use, um, dues or software or repairs or credit card use for any of those? Or, and, and/or do they fall under the supplies or materials?
So, I thought we were gonna be using any procurement cards.
We're not, we don't use procurement cards, is that what you're-
Well, this is what the policy reads.
We just edited what was the current policy?
Yeah, this is the only thing that was edited in the draw.
Yeah, so.
This edits, did you have the red line, we, we edited the policy.
Yeah, but not the title?
Not the title, we can't change the title, but we can change-
Yeah, you can. Yes, you can change the title. Because it's just, you know, credit cards, period. You don't have to have procurement.
Yeah, we're just maintaining the one district credit card.
Yeah.
Purposes.
We don't, we don't want procurement cards, so.
Because there were some, yeah, well, that's why I brought that up too, because I didn't think you had the procurement.
Yeah, we have no intention of getting it.
So then I, I- Yeah, I would recommend that changed, and where it says superintendent's debt board or his designee, I think it should be or business administrator. I think it should be one of those two, because they're the ones that are the financial responsibility for them, um, in the process and making sure that they're utilized properly, um, in both places that have superintendent or designee. It's just my recommendation, since I won't be here to make it next time.
Is that, um, accurate, Dan, I guess, and Jefferson, that only you and/or Jefferson are allowed to procure a credit card in the district's name?
That's how it's been set up.
Yeah, I mean, that's how it's set up, the cards in Jefferson's name.
Okay.
Well, it isn't technically in my name, it says SAU eighteen card on it, but when I use it, I use my name.
Right.
Because I'm the authorized purchaser on it, so.
Okay, so it sounds like we should make that change.
And that's how I got my Mercedes, so.
Strike that, strike that.
Don't make jokes like that.
Thank you, Deb. Any, any other questions? Alright, uh, see none, all in favor of accepting first reads, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And abstentions? First reads are accepted. Dan, do we have any late items?
No late items.
Nothing late tonight. Uh, uh, second, public participation, any public pushing to make a statement? Nope?
Ladies, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm, I'm really tired from eating all that food.
No, we're about to set a record.
Deb, we have a need for a second non-public tonight, you do not either. Anybody like to make a motion?
I will, it's my last one.
Go ahead, Deb.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, I will second that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you all.